Open up today's county board of commissioners and formal work session to one o'clock, April 10. And we'll start out with tourism.
Yes.
And Commissioner Premicich?
Yeah, you gave me an hour. I was not going to say, I'm going to fill an hour. I just, what I did want to do is update you on the things that we have been doing to develop a tourism plan for the county. As you're aware, I did pull together a few key people. Veronica Hinkle, Cheryl Kelsch, who was with the Chamber in Newburgh and also did their tourism in that area and was on the Willamette Valley Visitors Association Board. And Melissa Grace, who also, and is still running the website for Travel Yamhill County, even though it has kind of gone, it has folded for lack of funding, but we're trying to resurrect. So Melissa Grace is still with us.
Excuse me, clarification, is that Travel Yamhill Valley or county?
Oh, I'm sorry. Travel Yamhill Valley, which is currently in a, what you would call a, different state.
Okay.
And then we have, I've asked Kathy at online Mac, and she's agreed to host that website at no charge until we can see where we're going with that. So they've been very generous in that because Comcast was the provider, and there was no more money left to pay them, so Kathy has stepped up the plate there. Jeff from Travel McMenville, or McMenville?
Visit McMenville.
Visit McMenville, has been a very, very important piece to this, and the young lady that works with Jeff in his office, they've been really helpful in organizational pieces and input. So that's been, that was our core, to try and see where do we go from here. And that's where the summit that we, that both of you were able to attend, came out of that. Oh, I'm sorry, Morgan from Willamette Valley Wine Growers Association is also a member of that steering committee, along with Joel Kiff. And we got the summit put together with the idea of, let's reach out and see what kind of excitement, what kind of atmosphere there is for tourism, who wants to be at the table. And I was very, very pleasantly surprised, as you noticed, there were, we had a really good turnout. I think there were 78 people showed up. Everybody left their name and email address, and all but a handful of people left comment sheets. So the next step then was to take the, and as both of you are aware, before the meeting was over, I set the date for the next summit, June 13th. The purpose in that was to really make certain everybody realized that this was not a one and done, that they were all going to be invited back so that we could take the comments that we received. And so, okay, I don't want to get ahead of myself. So then, after the summit, I got everybody back together of the steering group, and we started talking about who needs to be at the table, heading this up, before we go back for the next summit. Reviewing the comments, which we did, we went through those that Friday, and it started boiling down to just a few key points that people were very concerned with. People who are outside of an incorporated area and being left out of the conversation, they wanted a place at the table. The wine industry being an important aspect of tourism and what role they would play in the different AVAs and how they connected. The hotel industry, the restroom industry, each of the individual cities. Now, within the county, we have cities that do have their own transapartaking taxes, and we, but we don't want the other communities to be left out either. So at our meeting then, we determined that we wanted representation from each of our 10 cities, that we wanted representation from the Wine and Grows Association, and if possible, one from each of the AVAs, but at least from the Wine Grows Association. We wanted representation from hotels or bed breakfasts, lodging facilities outside of the incorporated areas. And there were two people at that meeting who were very vocal about that, and so we're reaching out to, well, there are four different people identified to reach out to, to see if they wanted to participate in the steering piece. The hotel, the community plate wanted to be, wanted to have a place at the table as a food vendor, and then the...
We started a little early tomorrow. Have a seat.
Have a seat. There was a desire to get both the elements and the Atticus, one or both of them to participate in terms of their, the nature of the clientele that they go after as opposed to, we're going to also ask the gentleman at the Comfort Inn, but we want the whole spectrum, the unincorporated, the general hotel, the upscale, so that we can really make sure that we're focused on all of the right aspects of this. Let's see, what was the other hotels, restaurants? Oh, then James over here at the Northwest Gifts.
Northwest Gifts.
That was very, he is also asked for a place. So anyway, at this point in time, that was the identified grouping. Jeff and Cheryl and Veronica are reaching out to get the level of interest from that group, so that the next time we come together, which will be in two weeks, we will then, those people outlined will be invited, and I'm going to try and use room 32, because this room's getting overcrowded, or another room. But anyway, we're going to get them to the table, and review again the comment sheets that we got at the summit, and then get their input as we start developing the program for the summit on June 13th. So that's where we are right now. There's a lot of excitement, a lot of people. Commissioner Olson's niece was, she was a niece, wasn't she?
Yes, Irene Bernard.
Irene, yeah. When you looked at me, anyway, she was...
Irene said lease and not niece. Is it my niece and something?
Her niece is, his niece is the director of the Willamette Valley Visitors Association. And so she's going to be a key component in helping us to re-engage with that body, because as you are well aware, there was a great desire for a seat at that table while we're trying to figure out where we're going. As a county organization, we still need to be a player in the overall Willamette Valley visitors. So that's, that's the, pretty much, if they've got any questions, but that's pretty much where we are at this point in time.
So how is the county factored into this?
The county is, right now, we do not have a voice as a county entity at the table. And as was brought out at that meeting, Jeff, his board has made it very clear, he's not going to be the voice of the county, he works for the city. In Newburgh, the other larger transit tax area, Cheryl was doing that through the Chamber. The Chamber has now relinquished that, they're no longer doing it, and the county, or the city went out for a person to utilize the revenue from the transit tax, and, but that's in flux, as I understand it, over there at this point in time. They haven't really determined the exact job description or how they're going to use those dollars, so. But the, the idea, as the comments came in, is there was universal desire that we have a voice for the county at the table for Willamette Valley Visitors Association, because there's so much money that is bundled through them, that with no voice, we're not getting our piece in the action, so.
How does that, how does that, what does that look like in terms of our involvement specifically?
I don't know yet, Mary, to be really honest with you. I, what I, my desire and the sense I get from the table that we've got so far is, they want to see a resurrection of tour Yamhill Valley, representing Yamhill Valley, or Yamhill County actually, and how that's going to materialize, how it's going to come about, that has not been identified yet. Everything's on the table. Membership, but as most people have indicated, they don't think that's a viable answer. Oh, there it is. Apologies.
Okay.
Basically, we were starting early there, I'm sorry. A combination of city, the cities that do have TLCs or TLTs. TLC is technically a curse. Cities do have those, participating, the other cities at least budgeting some dollars, but the county is going to be having to, or being asked to step up some way in some way. At this point in time, I don't know what that looks like.
So as far as this being maybe considered economic development piece, would that be something we would be asking SedCor?
I met with Chad today, because he brought Pat, 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 I apologize. Our new, the person that has been hired by SedCor to direct their activities in Yamhill County and will be housed at Jody Christensen's office. She was here today, it's her second day on the job. And so I was visiting with Chad. Economic development is, he's leaning more toward the trading sector, however, he recognizes the critical nature of what brings people into the valley, the quality of life that that can provide for somebody considering bringing a business to the community, what do we have to offer? The kinds of trade sector manufacturing jobs or jobs that could be created by tourism, even within the wine industry, you know, how many, how many items do they use that they have to order from outside the county that could possibly be manufactured here? And those are areas that Chad's looking at. So I told him I want to see an integration to the degree possible with economic development and tourism and the Cultural Coalition. All of these things impact, and fair, all these things impact tremendously the cash flow through the county. I know Cultural Coalition, there's $45 million. The fair, not the fair ground, overall, it's about a $7 million impact from our fair, fair grounds. That, that's, that's, those are real dollars that come into the community, that, that's all economic development. So anyway, these are all aspects of what we're going to ask Chad and her name to be integrating into their overall activities. Just as a side note, one of the first things that we're going to do is resurrect that the council for economic development that we had started before AJ left. We'll have representation from all the cities on that board, so that'll be, that's a part of that. But tourism is going to be factored in, how it's going to connect yet, I can't begin to tell you.
Thank you. Mary, did you have any questions?
Well, no, I have a couple of comments, though. Is, I agree with the commissioner that if you look at, visit Willamette Valley as the regional DMO, you have marketing organization, and the five DMOs that currently visit Salem, Benton Counties, and Yamhill, Travel Yamhill Valley, or whatever this entity is not having a place as the sixth DMO and a regional, number one, it's costing us money, and we're not giving them the service we should give out of the Willamette Valley Visitors Association. Irene's trying very hard, but she's having a dual role, and so she's got to be careful what she does as the Willamette, as Vice President of the Willamette Valley Visitors Association.
But a resident of Yamhill.
But a resident, yeah. A resident of Bethel High, Bethel.
Well, but you have...
But yeah, resident. But I think there's things that we're losing out on, like the revenue from the wine plates. And I don't know what that was, I haven't seen any numbers, but I think it's critical, no matter what we do or who does it, that we have a place at that table as the sixth DMO. So it puts us on equal footing with Travel, sort of, Visit Salem, and Benton Counties, and there's Lynn County, I think, DMO, but, but we're not on, we're definitely not on...
Mary and Lynn.
Yeah, we're, we probably have, I'd say, a good 30% of all the tourism in Willamette Valley, Willamette Valley, and we're not getting 5% of the benefits. And that's a concern of mine. The only, one of the comments that Commissioner made, that I'm a little not concerned necessarily, and I understand, you know, attracting the Atticus and Allison, because they're too high value, they bring a lot of wine, you know, people to the industry, but they make up about, the two of them make up about 5% of the lodging rooms in Yamhill County, because there's Best Westerns, you know, the, the others, and said, the roadway in Newburgh...
Comfort Inn.
Comfort Inn.
We're all there.
Yeah, so I think it's very critical that we bring all of the lodging, under that lodging portion, that we not concentrate, and I understand, working with Atticus and Allison, that we bring all the lodging that are, because when we went through this 15 years, 20 years ago, eventually with the city of McMenville about a TLT, they, they really weren't on bringing two or three players in to the game, and it did not pass at that time, because most of the lodging operators were totally against, not that they were against the concept, but they were against it because they weren't brought to the table. So I think it's really critical we bring all lodging operating, like Stan said, bed and breakfast, the Allison, the Atticus, the Best Westerns, the Comfort Inns, anybody that has lodging needs to be at the...
And that's why I said we're including all of those entities. The Atticus, the Allison, primarily because they bring a lot of corporate retreats to their facilities, and corporate retreats are an opportunity for our economic development people to get in front of people who make those big decisions, and can help them to structure some tours, to structure some opportunities to connect with the business community. So I think they're critical, not to take anything away from the Best Westerns, Comfort Inn, because they're an important element in all of this. So right now, all I'm attempting to do is make sure that I have all the right people at the steering committee level, so as we go forth with the new summit, that we've got a real robust set of criteria and action items for the, for the attendees, and I want to see at least twice as many as we had this last one. So that's, that's our goal, June 13th, we want to, we want to need every seat in the civic center. So that's, that's where we are right now.
I have just had one more.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's fine, Stan. One more comment, being that we just, basically, we just are now officially doing business with SedCor. And SedCor, really, their strength, I think, is the traded sectors, you know, that's really their strength. I think we, as a board of commissioners, who our contract right now is with SedCor, we have to be very careful. I agree with everything Stan said, that, you know, tourism is a big part of economic development. The Fair and Event Center is a big part of the, not just the Fair, but the Fair and Event Center. The Cultural Coalition, I think, is a very underestimated part of the economic development, but I, I think we have to be cognizant, very aware that we don't ask SedCor to do too much that moves them away from their key thing, which is traded sector, job creation, job attraction, which for the manufacturing sectors, traded sectors, and not working with them before, I think this, I haven't met the everybody myself, but not working with SedCor before, that, that is something I think we, it's not that we shouldn't, I think we just have to be very aware of that we don't overload SedCor, so they get into things that's keeping them from doing what their strength is, so. But that's the only comments I have.
And I appreciate that for clarification in my conversation with Chad this morning, and the, that was a big part of the conversation. Their job is to bring businesses, to retain business, to create jobs, but I just wanted to bring about the connectivity of, we're going to have a robust tourism activity taking place that's going to bring people to our community that they can connect with, and just looking at how those connectivities take place, you know, they go off to these trade shows, and they make contacts with people, but we're going to have people coming here that are the same people they would meet at those trade shows. How do we make that happen?
Oh, yeah, I agree, I think they are the driver.
But I don't, I don't want them running our...
That's right. I think they're a driver, just like, Visit McMenville, I was a tourist, as a DMO, is a big driver for MDP, because they do a lot of things behind each other. And that's what I look at, SedCor is doing, is whatever way we go, whatever that way happened to be with tourism, that they have to be a driver, working with those people, but they're definitely, it's, it's a substitute for, we have cross motivation.
All right, so, let's see, I know John was going to be, anything else on this particular...
No, I think that went over the next steps. Our next big meeting is June 10th.
June 13th. June 13th. And we're still, location to be determined, we're attempting to have a location big enough to handle at least twice what we have this time, which will be about 100.
Yeah, and at that time, are we going to, or before that time standard, are we going to have a list, I know you talked about earlier when we did the live, a list of, just kind of summary list of what all of the surveys, how they came back?
Oh, yeah, in fact, after, because we'll be meeting again in, like I said, three weeks, bringing as many of the people I outlined to the table, reviewing those, reviewing those comment sheets, and then I'll be bringing that back, so you'll have a general idea of what the summit's going to look like.
Yeah, and I think that's another thing that I think, as the tree commissioner, you need to look at for next year, and I know as being the chair next year, I'll look at it, is currently we have, like for our delegation responsibility, we have economic development broke up from tourism. I think we need to discuss, really, is it important to have tourism as part of economic development, or should this continue to stay broken up like they are? And I think there's a lot of those venture initiatives, that, since they're not really part of their initiative, but how should we handle those? Because we've always in the past, at least my knowledge, always in the past, that whether it be Travel Yamhill Valley or tourism, it's always kind of been separate from economic development. Are they really, should they go hand in hand together? I think that's a very important decision. I mean, we have a year to, nine months to make that decision, but that's a very important decision.
All right, so those from bosses, Jessica is here. We can go ahead and do department updates. Jessica Lee for Community Justice. Thank you, Jessica. Thanks for being here.
We get you two weeks in a row.
Wow.
I know, right? Lovely eyes.
We're so fortunate.
I'm the fortunate one, board commissioners. I am happy to bring an update today. I'm going to focus primarily on adult pro-provation, and just hit on what's been highlighted for the last quarter. So first of all, I wanted to tell you about our new list of adult PO hire, we brought on Pam Ramsey, as of March 26th. Yes, she comes to us from McMenville P with 14 years' experience.
What's her name?
What's her name?
Pam Ramsey.
She was a co-enforcement officer there for 14 years, and she comes to us with some life experience, which is wonderful, because typically for these entry-level positions, we get somebody that's fairly young in life and doesn't yet have a life experience, so she's been excellent so far. And we're hoping, this will be our 14th PO, this is, we're really hoping that this list is to accommodate over 60, or domestic violence and mental health case homes, which are really high at this time. So with that, I'm happy to also tell you that we brought on a specific training program that is certified through DPSST, which is the Department of Safety Standards and Training. And with that, came Larry Edison, who's our new correctional manager. He came from Lane County, and they also have implemented this training program. And so he was already a certified officer, and can come in and act as our supervisor in that position. And so I'm really excited, because we're only the second pro-provation county to implement this program. It's a very structured program, based primarily on adult learning process and contemporary evaluation techniques. It's a very structured 29-week program that entails a three-week orientation that she's currently in, and then four phases, that's primarily focused on case management, field work, and then advanced case management and advanced field work, with evaluation in between those phases. And that doesn't include the additional six weeks of training that she receives at the police academy, the DPSST academy. So lots of training, you're assigned a training officer during that period of time, and we actually currently have two field officers. And basically, how those folks are selected, and this is a new process for us, but they have to be employed in good standing, they completed a week-long certification process through DPSST to provide them with their credential, and, I don't know, I lost my place here. Must be in good standing, and they must be, have an intermediate equivalent of certification from DPSST. So basically, that means they completed 18-month probationary period, and they have additional three years' experience for that to receive that certification. So these are more experienced POs. So currently, we have two officers, and although it actually requires four officers to be able to implement this, we're going to be able to manage with the two by training off. And the good news is that several other staff that are interested in going into the certification training and considering becoming trainers, which I think is really important for our succession planning. We have a couple staff talking about retirement, which is a little scary. I think we have maybe two that are specifically talking about it, but one in the not near future that we need to be planning for. So it's really great that we're able to bring on this structured program, so I wanted to let you know about that. Additionally, we're also taking the opportunity to look at our internal survivor skills training, and we actually have an employee who is interested and volunteered to go to certification for TASER, firearms, and defensive tactics, and we're currently working on what that curriculum will look like for us. And although we continue to work in partnership with our law enforcement agencies, they've always been wonderful, tested training to us, it's a really great opportunity to tailor it to the needs of pro-provation. It's a really great opportunity to tailor it to the needs of pro probation. As you can probably imagine, with law enforcement, they're doing field contacts, pulling up cars, doing various things that don't necessarily equal the type of work that we're doing. So we're able to use this training in this office to specifically specify what we need for our training. So focusing on field contacts, office contacts, those type of things. So we're really excited about that as well. Wanted to also tell you a little bit about our peer support program. And this has been implemented, I think, within the last year, year and a half. My corrections manager, Brian Rucker, is really heading this up, and he's incredibly passionate about it. And essentially, this is a program designed to help any DCJ staff, whoever come up with stress, trauma, vicarious trauma, secondary trauma, critical incidents. So this is folks who are dealing with life stressors, such as divorce, such as tox-in family member, or the vicarious trauma that we experience through our clients. So unfortunately, we have to delve into our clients' minds sometimes to really determine what is the root cause of their criminality. Sometimes it can cause some secondary trauma issues, as we delve into those issues. And essentially, we can also experience secondary trauma if we lose a client to suicide, or overdose, or a death of some type. So the idea is that we have three peer support members, and they were anonymously selected by our staff through a Google poll. And we're able to send those staff to one-week certification training. This is actually a specialized PO out of Arizona, and she's also a professor of psychology at the local college there as well. And she came in, we partnered with Washington County, and provided both our staff with training, with sectoral staff. So essentially, it allows us to reach out to our staff who are in need, totally voluntary, totally optional. We basically just check in with folks and say, hey, we understand that you recently just lost a client to suicide, would you like some support? We want to talk about it. And these folks are not professionals by any means. Our intent is not to be that. We're just supposed to provide support and refer to various services and different areas. So some of the program elements include a new employee orientation, so Pam will receive an actual out-of-home training where she recognizes and understands the program and how she can utilize it for herself, for her peers. This is a really great feature. We also offer education to new employees' family or support systems as well, if they should have an interest in that. And then we're also providing training to our staff. There's actually several different levels of training. The first one we're currently operating is called Stress Management Online. And the idea is that you're essentially, you learn how the brain works, how the brain responds to trauma, shorthand, and long-term effects, and then the things we can do to improve upon those effects, or try to prevent any long-term losses due to it. So, as I mentioned earlier, totally peer-initiated support upon a stressor, critical incidents. We've also been trying to engage in secondary wellness activities. So we have, remember, we call it our wellness libraries, about seven to eight books. But suggested reading for folks that want to learn more about peer support and learn more about stress management. We also have a relationship with the community center, where the POs have got together, and they use the walking trail, go over when it's raining, sorry, on break, walking on the trail there. I've also heard that some of the staff have done some meditation sessions. There's a really neat application called Headspace, that folks can use, and it's not just about relaxing or going to sleep, which is sometimes what I think of meditation, but it's also about rejuvenation, and, you know, getting yourself prepped up to act and capture breaks. So those are kind of some of the wellness activities that we're trying to offer as well. And then lastly, because I know I don't have a lot much time, I mean, I'm very busy, wanted to tell you about our adult victim advocate position. So we previously had a half-time staff person who was working in juvenile, doing post-education work with victims and their families. And I'm glad to tell you that as of February 1st, we rolled out the other half of that position on the adult side. So she has been attending trainings. We actually kicked it off with a whole training for a whole staff, and we have Denise Penna who came down from Washington County, and she's very victim advocate, well-known throughout the state for her advocacy. And so she provided a basic victims' rights training to our staff, and introduced Sarah on what her role was, and how we could utilize her, and how the POs could utilize her. So obviously, we've been working very closely with Deb Bridges, with the Yankel County District Attorney's Office, victim advocate, and she's assistant with the transition, and let us know about various trainings and other transitional things. Anthony, so that is essentially what I have for you this quarter, unless you have any questions or anything.
Great report, Jess.
Great, thank you.
Good job a little bit.
Any questions?
So I guess your probation's done now?
Yeah. I heard I'm always on probation.
Well, we were going to say.
You were going to say that?
No, we were.
Well, I got for my second budget presentation, so that goes down.
That's good.
We'll see you one more time.
We made it through that.
Old hat.
Old hat.
Doesn't feel like it.
Can't imagine that coming anywhere.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thanks.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, John Phelan is here, and.
I like what she said about meditation.
I thought it was a compliment.
You see John doing tai chi?
Thank you.
Five.
I'd like to see that.
Is that some of the eating?
Yeah. It's one of those oriental foods, you know?
No.
So, this is part of our preliminary consent agenda. You want to talk about the contract?
I do.
Okay. So, what we have on the preliminary consent agenda is to ratify the agreement between Public Works and Soil and Water Conservation District for the Yankel Soil and Water Conservation District Invasive Species Program Coordinator position, and that's in the amount of $15,329, and then $10,000 for the interns.
Correct. And Commissioner, that is a yearly figure. Now, I did get an email from Laura that Commissioner Olson, you felt that you hadn't had enough of the information, and my signature on this paper.
Well, that wasn't really the question, it was more the question, process questions.
My understanding is, right now, we are applying for the grant, we haven't got the grant, so I don't know at that point. I think it would be brought before you. The reason that we brought this before you at this stage is that past history has told us that the commissioners don't always agree on this type of expenditure. This happened before any of your terms, so actually, a lot of that. What we've done is, is actually, this started out in the vegetation committee, as Commissioner is well aware of what it was and where we're at. And it blossomed from there, where Soil and Water wanted to be a participant in this, and we felt that if we could get a grant, that Public Works would fund this position. Actually, the $30,000 that you're seeing is a fund for two years, which we're hoping that the grant will extend for two years. They have a pretty good feeling that it will, but right now, if we're successful in the grant, the grant is for one year, it's for $15,000 and some change. The $10,000 is the grant that we hired the interns from OSU. Right now, we tried for Lenfield, and it wasn't successful, and we're looking at candidates from there, because we're looking highly for GIS data that they're collecting. The program in a whole has been very positive. What we're doing is, is we're identifying, we have identified three areas of the county, and we're in a cooperative effort between Soil, Water, what's Luke's?
Basin Council.
Basin Council, thank you. Basin Council and Public Works will participate in three trial areas. And what we're going to do is, we're going to go out there and address both invasive species, plants, and erosion. So, what this position will do is not only work to coordinate these three, three positions that we're hoping to showcase frankly, and to be able to show at the farmers and citizens that are, but are a way of how we can maintain vegetation and in environmental safe ways. So that is our goal with this position. You know, Commissioner, if I haven't been, you know, this has actually been on the table for almost a year now, so, I mean, between the vegetation report, my reports and whatnot, I think that you're kind of fully aware of it.
Yeah, I'll go over what my question is. It was more of a process, not the program itself, because I'm a full believer, backer of doing this. I think it's a very critical thing we do, for the environment, for our citizens, for our vision. Mine was, I made a question, can you address this, was a process question that, when I read that and I saw the word, and Laura responded back me, the word ratify, and this is an intergovernmental agreement. I guess the organization I came from that, whether it be a grant or not a grant, that the intergovernmental agreements were approved by the Board of Electoral Officials after they've been reviewed by legal staff. And so when I saw John's signature on the piece of paper, not knowing that the grant hadn't been received or anything yet, it was like, okay, now, since we're only ratifying that, does that mean it's already been approved, and here we are asked to sign this intergovernmental agreement? To me, that hasn't been reviewed by legal staff as far as I know. So that was my process question. So if we're asked to ratify something, which to me sounds like it's a deal that's already been done, and we haven't actually seen the intergovernmental agreement itself, to have legal counsel with that. So, it was really a process. It seemed like we had the court cart, they had the horse, to me. But that's just, because we always get an intergovernmental, we always, intergovernmental agreements were always approved by the electorate, before we move forward for a grant or anything like that, to make sure, like John said, to make sure that all of the commissioners, the Board of Electoral Officials, were in unison, that that should happen, so.
And then Commissioner, what really happened there, to be truthful to you, is, is it wasn't Public Works, it was Soil and Water, waiting till the very last day. And when they came in, they had their hair on fire, and needed it signed, or else it probably would have come.
Oh, I don't necessarily blame you for signing it, it's just the whole process and whatnot.
Well, but in all fairness too, though, we have reviewed what was taking place, that had come here.
Correct.
A couple of different times. And so, we were aware that that was being worked on, and that the grant was being gone after by Soil and Water, they're going to manage this person, we're just providing a portion of the salary. So, John felt very comfortable that the Board of Commissioners were on board with the entire.
Oh, and as I say, again, I know, things that it's.
The, if I'm not mistaken, the memorandum, I understand, it was a very.
I haven't seen it before. We just got it, I think, last week or whatever.
Well, see, and that was my thing, you know, we're asking.
I haven't seen the.
Approving intergovernmental agreement, because nobody, the legal us haven't seen.
Actually, it is, it's an attachment to one that we did. Oh, I would say, it's just an end, but no, you have not seen the end of this position, but it actually just attached to a MOU that we have within as far as sharing equipment and so on.
And we'll have to take a look at it now.
My understanding, this is the application, this is not the grant, so I would imagine that if we're successful, which, frankly, that's.
The last time I talked to Michael, my understanding that Soil and Water had been awarded the grant, so I will do some follow-up.
Yeah, and I don't know that for 100%. I think this, what we signed was the application for the grant, and what, but they do have a fairly good, I mean, it's a short, they do feel that they have the grant successful, I don't think.
Yeah, and again, mine was when I saw the words ratify, intergovernmental agreement. That's the two words. That made me wondering, have legal reviewed it? And had it already been done? Because we were asked to ratify it, not to approve it.
So we have.
So that was a process, a legal process.
Question, Commissioner, if I can just one more.
I haven't seen it, I haven't, I can't agree, but I wrote it for Thursday.
So is it a normal process? The question is, is it a normal process that legal reviews those? Since we were only being asked to ratify it, did they approve it and give it to us to approve before?
Well, generally, yeah, we would review it as default. We won't weigh in with the department as to whether or not we think it's necessary for the contact issue, before we're with. But as soon as we get them, we review them. I think normally, the process would be that we would see it before it gets executed, and then it would get before the board for approval, before it gets executed. But I think, as John explained, for whatever reason, Soil and Water was very anxious to get it signed. And did I hear you right, that what you signed was simply a document memorializing the application for the grant?
For the grant, yes. The grant has to have a, they have to disclose all the participants in that. And what it is, is a matching fund grant, so Soil and Water contributing either in time and/or in cash. And Public Works has agreed to fund that position as a percentage for the year.
If you get the grant.
If the grant is successful.
So it's more than just, yes, we agree to sign on to the grant application, it's if the grant is successful, then this is the funding commitment that we're making.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that would normally, that would normally go through a different process, I think, than this. But, that's the reason I ask, because historically, not every grant application came before the Board of Commissioners. I think in the last three to five years, that's changed, because there have been concerns raised, and rightly so, about what happens after grants run out. And if you're receiving significant amounts of money to fund positions or activities in the county, it became, you know, understood that it was a concern of the board, that we want to know how the, how those positions are going to be funded, and how the county's going to maintain those services if they choose to after the grants run out. So there's been a shift in the last several years to bring more grant applications before the boards, and that's what I, perhaps it was a misunderstanding of that nature, that we had something that was kind of a mixture of both. It's both a commitment to apply for the grant, but also a commitment of funds that would extend, that would come into play if the grant was successful.
We weren't applying for the grant.
No, we were committing resources in the event that Soil and Water was successfully in obtaining the grant.
And I didn't see any place in there that it said, honestly, the paperwork, when I read everything, it looked foreign or anything, that John signed it, didn't say anything about, we had only funded that position if they were successful with the grant. So that was one of my questions, when we're committing $15,000, and $10,000 for interns, when we don't even know the grant, that the grant's going to go through.
Under our approval authority, contracts under $25,000 may be approved at the department at level and not come before the board.
And that, so that's.
This is a dollar figure then.
Would fit.
If it's a two, well, if it's a two-year term, it would, but if it's, if this is for a one-year period, then.
Well, the intern is separate from the.
Correct.
Yeah, the intern, I had no questions.
And that's, so $15,000 is all that would be signed.
That's a year, it's sort of $30,000.
Sure, that would be within, yeah, that would be within the scope of his authority.
Sure, but if it's intended to go and expected to go for two years, that would probably.
The case is a one-year grant.
Again, you know, there's a question of interruption, you know, there'd probably be proper procedures, and if we would, if we tried, Laura actually wanted a summary of it, and we did send this to her April 6th, and it is, it both tells the vendor, it tells the job description, what I'm asking for. Soil and Water just didn't give us the paperwork, because half the problem is, is that we kept asking and asking for a job description, and a grant description, and a letter, memorandum, and as you know, they just didn't get it to us.
And that's their, that's their issue. But I think, as again, I think it was just, I wanted to question the whole legal process we went through, not the benefit of doing the program or not doing the program, but again, committing the county and money to something that we don't even know if they were going to get the grant, not, that was my, that was my concern.
Right now, in my estimate budget presentation too, I explained that that position and the money was allocated for this position. I do think, not, you know, on a side note, that this is good for us. It shows a cooperation between us and the other. this is good for us. It shows a cooperation between us and the other entities, government entities. And I think we ought to do more of it, you know, as far as equipment sharing, facility sharing and stuff like that. I think it's a win-win situation.
I do too. I just, I, you know, there's no question.
Native Plant Society can be a big.
Yeah, there's all sorts of programs, I think, that benefit the county for doing something like this. I just want to make sure the legal stuff gets taken care of.
Maybe just pass on to them that if something like this happens again in the future, we'll need more, need more of the legal, or else it may not be something that can be approved in that immediate, you know, urgent timeframe that they, was it something that applied? They had to get the applications?
There was a.
So maybe just reminded that we'll need, you know, more like a three or four weekly time before the.
No, we did, we hounded them, we hounded them to get it.
We did. The first presentation for the roadside vegetation committee was ages ago. Then they did a recap of it prior to this. But, yeah, it's, but when you're working with outside entities, no matter what your rules are, that we don't want to miss out on how to do this. And so, anyway.
Yeah, that answers my, I'm all for it. I want you to know that I'm all for it. I think it's a good deal. It's just the process that it went, went through. So.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Baylen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Did you get that phone number for me, by?
I did. Oh, texted her.
Yeah, just texted.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you.
So, Chair, I recommend that we put that on the consent of, Jim. It's already.
It is already on the consent.
Based on John's explanation and.
Thank you, John. Okay, so, um, we will, since Dave Hagerberg is here, we will just move on to item D after. Dave Hagerberg is here, and sorry, you're not on the agenda, and I'm not quite.
Oh, sorry, prostitute, you're not on the agenda.
What the subject is, I will let Commissioner Primicich fill us in.
You know, it's never made a difference if Dave's on the agenda or not.
He doesn't need to be on the agenda.
That's right.
Thank you for being here. Stan?
I invited, I did invite Mr. Hagerberg here some time ago. And due to my busy, busy mind, I failed to get Dave on the agenda. But we have a request for support of a letter that Dave is going to present. And so I will let Dave do his own talking.
The question is, Dave, do we have a choice of ways for him or not?
Well, you can say no, no.
That's a says.
Do it at your risk.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hagerberg?
So, we all know that the first phase of the bypass is up, open and operating. And apparently with considerable public support and success from everything I hear. We also know that with respect to Phase Two, which is that portion of the bypass from 219 on around to 99W connecting at Rex Hill, is the next area of development that the Parkway Committee has recommended and is working hard. We have about $40 million already in funded for that next piece. But it takes a lot more than that to move that project ahead. I will tell you, one of the great accomplishments we have, and a number of you have been involved, was the last short section of the legislature, they amended the Transportation Act in 2017. They did it this way. That act said that before the gas tax increases would kick in in the future for the benefit of ODOT and for funding, they had to meet certain reporting targets with respect to the three metropolitan projects. We were successful in having a fourth project, the Newburg-Dundee bypass, added to that reporting requirement, a major accomplishment in terms of just setting forth the importance of the project. The purpose of this letter, of this letter, it's a statement of support, it's not a commitment. But what we know is that both the Oregon Legislature and the federal government are saying, if you want to finish that highway and you want more funding, we need to all partner together. And so we thought it was appropriate, and I've been talking to Commissioner Primicich about that, about making a statement in writing so that we would use that as we look towards federal funding and then going back to the state for additional funding. And so this letter is for that purpose. There are lots of people that continue to talk about projects all over the state. But what we found is that if you never let up, if you're always there at the first, if you're always asking, if you're always presenting your proposal on this incredibly important project, that those bring great benefits. So it is with that in mind that we come here to the commission. And I just appreciate Commissioner Primicich's leadership on the local level of being a force and making this local support happen. I will tell you that the Dundee City Council has already approved it. It's met with favorable comment from the Confederated Tribal Council. And I know tonight, the city of McMinville has it on their agenda. So the point of this letter would be, the next thing, once it's signed, and I've talked to Transportation Commissioner Chair Bany, we will be presenting this letter to the Oregon Transportation Committee meeting in their May meeting in Salem. And that's just one more step of an affirmation in being first in line, if you will, for opportunities for funding the next part of the bypass. And what we are really careful, the last two paragraphs are the important one. We don't not only want to finish Phase Two, we want to finish the bypass. And then we merely say that the entities affirm their continuing support for the construction of Phase Two and completion of the bypass. We by design didn't make any commitments with respect to anything beyond that. That would be an issue for a future date. We don't even know what those might look like.
And in addition to that, it's very important to understand that when the OTC meets, Mr. Hagerberg is at that table almost every single time. And there are not very many projects, in fact, there are no projects that have been in front of OTC as often and as with the consistency that the Newburg-Dundee bypass has. So it's recognized as a project that there has tremendous community support and that the advocacy is there. And they're going to see us. I personally have only been at three of those OTC meetings. Dave has been probably at 300. But I, and it was not planned that Commissioner Bany would be sitting next to you at that dinner, Mr. Hagerberg. It was just fate.
It was planned.
Actually, it was not.
Nobody knew that she was coming.
She was in McMinville last Friday night at a dinner on behalf of Habitat for Humanity, Humanity, and her close friend, Mary Stern. And they were, have a great relationship because of the League of Oregon Counties. And it just happened that I sat beside Chair Bany at that dinner. And so it was time for a great conversation to move the project forward. But I also want to point out that the MWA is an important other venue in Commissioner Primicich's involvement in that. And this would be also be presented to MWA, who's been a strong supporter. And it's that leadership there also that continues to make a difference. And I don't want to forget other committees. You've all been extraordinarily supportive. But somebody's the point guy. And thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Hagerberg?
Stan has been definitely in the trenches on this one. Appreciate it. Dave, I'm sorry about the mix-up and that you weren't memorialized on this, but you were here nevertheless. And the most important thing is, I would suggest that we put this on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity of coming to.
Thanks for coming. It's nice to see you.
So I have a question, Dave. Did Chair Bany, when she sat down next to you, did she say, what is Mary trying to get me into sitting down with ex-Commissioner Stern? She thinks she had been put on that?
No, actually, what Chair Bany was very, was very excited about was not only Atticus Hotel, but the fact that that whole event was making a huge difference for Habitat for Humanity. And that, that was her first.
Great, great permission.
Yeah. With, being a commissioner from Deschutes County, she understands all of the issues that you face and is, is really trying to make a big difference. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerberg. It was nice to see you two days in a row. All right. Good afternoon.
I'll be soon.
All right. So items, the extension will add that to the consent agenda, if that's okay. And we'll move on to item D, non-consent agenda items and other topics for discussion. Do we have any other topics for discussion?
I just have one, I mean, one I'd like to bring up, just an update. I'm going to just commend Desiree and Laura for all the work they've done on recruitment of our new county manager. To bring up a couple of questions, I know, is that, and I'll ask, knowing that Ken is happy, that I want to add it, asking it towards the applicant. But we decided when we first.
Excuse me, I think, Ken, you might, maybe it's probably a good idea that you might be part of this discussion. What do you think?
Well, it's not going to be regarding him, but it might be a good.
Well, it's still.
Anything around.
Rather be the point. So, yeah, thank you.
It'll only be a minute.
Appreciate it.
Or an hour. Or, no, it'll be a minute, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. A couple, a couple things. Before Ken inside room, when we went through the process and the chairman for the process, I mean, determined that we weren't going to have a citizen input panel. I had talked to Desiree and Laura about for our final three applicants. I wasn't for not having an input, citizen input panel, but the other three, our final three applicants going through some meet and greets. I think it's critical that our citizens have some kind of involvement in this process. If it's no more than to meet our final three, to, to have a chance to put in comments. But for me, it's more important, because I think that's where you get a chance, as commissioners, as elected officials, we get a chance to see how our applicants interact with the public, how the public interacts with our applicants. And so Desiree suggested that I bring it up to the other commission about the need, I think, to ensure that we have some kind of public participation in this process, which I'm still for. And I think it's critical that we have that public engagement in that process. So I just want to bring it aware that I'm still believe that's, I have changed my mind, and I still believe that's critical, no matter who the three finalists are. And if you look, Carlton does it every place I've been part of, you do it. And I just want to ensure that we have that public transparency of the process. On how that changes our process going forward, I don't know. I look, there's nothing on their schedule now to have any kind of citizen participation at all in the process, like a meet and greet and then fill out comment cards. Because a lot of times, I think, the citizens can provide us as elected officials with information that we may, as a part of our entities, we may not necessarily see or witness or experience. So I just wanted to bring that up. But I still think it's very important that we have some kind of public citizen input in this process. And that was my little comments.
I have a, just a, when we agree on the process, we do have community leaders and community stakeholders as part of the panels.
But that's not.
Three of them.
Yeah, that's not. We have nothing to give, I mean, there are citizens, community partners. We don't have anything in the process that, that will, we, if 100 county citizens wanted to come and meet our three finalists, that we could take input from them as, as just community, just everyday tax-paying citizens? We don't have anything on our process for that. And that's what I'm, I think we really need, what we're missing about. That's my opinion there.
I think there's an input we're getting from our stakeholders that are participating in the, in the interviews. Certainly fit the bill of being a citizen input. I've been on a lot of selection committees, the school board, I hired, I was part of hiring five different superintendents. We did have a reception to introduce our new superintendents as we hired them. And I certainly, I think that's very appropriate. We could have a reception party for superintendents. The selection of that person who's going to be the commander-in-chief around here needs to be a person who, people who will not only be working with, but people who will interact on an ongoing basis. And that's, that's the stakeholders that are part of the process. That interaction is taking place. I personally, I don't care if the community meets our candidates or not. A lot of them have already met, a lot of our community. But I don't, I don't see that as a viable way of getting the right administrator. I think, I think the process is going to get us an administrator who fills all of the needs and requirements of the position. And the people who are in the interview process, a lot of them are business owners, a lot of them are people who recognize the characteristics and qualities and communication skills of the person we need sitting in that office. And so.
I just prefer, I mean, that's, and I think that's a difference in style. It's just my preference. So what I like to do is stand back in the corner and see how this person, we're going to learn real quick how they interact with our partners. That'll become very, very quick. But how do they interact with our regular, everyday citizens? We did that, made one mistake, I think, with the last hiring of our city manager, only made one mistake, because we really didn't go all the way with that. And it's the only time that I go back and I think we made a mistake. But to sit back and just watch the interaction and to get some of the comments we got, honestly, as an elected official, to get some of the comments we got from some of the public were things that as an elected official concentrated so much on the position itself, that I probably never, ever would have taken into consideration. So, but that's just, I'm just saying what my, it's a difference in style, but I'm just saying that's what my preference. I want the public to be, every, all the public to be involved. That's, that's just my style. So, but it's, say, I'm only, I'm only one commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Probably is very involved in putting us in the position to make these decisions. And that's what they charge us with doing. But anyway.
I had a, so we had a, okay, any other, any other topics for discussion, Commissioner Olson, did you have any other discussion?
No, I just thought that yesterday's AOC Day, and some of the things we talked about, legislative update, the legislative session were very important. And I think, as we've talked about, the new things that have come from the legislature as far as opioid abuse and HHS type issues, and were very critical. And I really, the new AOC president, I like the way that he's leading the organization, because I think Commissioner Hope is really outcome-driven. And I don't think Commissioner Hall is very good, but I think the organization is going to be much stronger with Commissioner Hope. And it was actually probably one of the better AOC days I've been to.
Okay, I just wanted to bring up, I know that we had, that Commissioner Olson, you had suggested that we have a goals and objective discussion as a work, a work session. And then you requested that if you.
Yes, and the reason I did that, because normally those kind of things are done as the first part or prior to budgeting. And we're so late into the budgeting process now. I plan on definitely bringing it back up, but after the budget is completed. I still, I still want to have those. But I'd like us to get through the budget and get through, get all the budget finalized, the budget committee and everything. So it's one of those things that I'm still a firm believer, we need to have them. But I think it can wait a little bit till we get through the budgeting process. And that's why.
Okay, I was just a little confused.
No, it was, it was a time, I told Laura it was a timing, it was a timing issue.
Okay.
I'm trying to let you know what you're doing.
Oh, yeah. So it wasn't, I don't want to do it. I still definitely want to do it. But let's get through the budget and get that finalized.
Commissioner.
Well, the Kansas P Act, the Commissioner Olson comments, the AOC, we have a couple of guests that I thought made some great presentations. What I was excited about is the transportation, the Tiger Grant was resorted in the omnibus bill, and it crippled its size. So it went from 500 million to 1.5 billion. And we have applied twice for Tiger Grants and been unsuccessful. They're, they're a very extensive process. But you can get up to $25 million with the Tiger Grant. So given the expansion of those dollars, I've got a really press that we do that again. Were you there the day I set up that conference call and talked to the people in DC, when I had the Parkway Committee set up a conference call, and we talked to them? At the time, they had no idea whether they would be refunded or not. So they asked that once the, once there was certainty as to the funding, that we get back in touch with them. My purpose of the phone call that day was I wanted to find out what, if anything, they could do to assist us in making certain that our application consisted of all of the right terms and had all of the key points covered so that we would have a much better chance. And they were very open to having that discussion with us. So I am going to set up another call now that the, it has been refunded and with those additional dollars and that would, to. And with those additional dollars, that would, to Dave's point, another 25 million on top of the 40 we have. And pretty soon, you're talking real money, you know, so.
I disagree with the Tiger Grants, not disagree with the Tiger Grants, because I think the chance of $25 million is critical. But when I was a city representative to the Parkway Committee, four years in a row, every year we'd apply for a Tiger Grant for the bypass. And they said, "Well, good grant, but you need to include this." Next year, so we included it. The next year, said, "Oh, yeah, now that you include that, but you got to include this." The next year, "Well, now you include that, but you got to include this." I think, no matter what we do, trying to get a grant that'll include everything that the people who decide who those Tiger Grants go to at the federal level? Because they're going to tell you, "Yeah, we can do another grant," and this is my disappointment. "We can do another grant, it could be the greatest grant in the world we did." So, I think our last four grants were very good. But they're going to say, "Oh, but you left this part out," or you didn't address that.
To address that, Phil...
Federal Transportation, Federal Highways.
Phil has agreed to be present...
Well, that's nice.
...at the next conference call.
Phil Deaver or whatever.
He is the Oregon Representative for Federal Highways, and he is in charge of the Tiger Grant and other federal highway projects in the state of Oregon. And so, he has agreed to participate in that conference call with the Federal Transportation Office. And so, those concerns, now, they cannot still...
They'll change.
But bottom line is, if we don't apply, we can guarantee we're not going to get it.
That's right.
If we do apply, we still have...
No question, I agree. It's like the FAST Act being included. The FAST Act should mean a big, big pot of money. I'm not so sure it will, but it should be.
And the other person who was there was John Huffman, who was named as the State Director for USDA. And they have, gosh, they have a lot of money to spread around for urban, for rural development. Prior to his being named, Jill Reese was our State Director of USDA. Jill and I worked together with Dean Harder over at George Fox University. And we were successful in the grant to help fund a, an engineering project for George Fox University through USDA. I got John up the hall after the meeting. I did point out in the meeting the success of this grant, and also the fact that we have 10 cities in the county, Yankton County, and all 10 of them are under 35,000 population, which makes all 10 of them eligible for rural funding. Because that's the cutoff for USDA rural, rural funding is 35,000 population and under. So, I extended an invitation to visit each of our 10 cities, much the same as the tour that I did with Boeing. But I'm, I, he said he does work for food, and so I promised to feed him at every stop. But he has agreed to come out and visit with us. And I made him aware, broadband is really big right now.
Yeah, I have, I'm going to give you a call back for give me these, because there's so much money out there for rural broadband, not for the cities, but the rural areas.
$600 million, and I told him about Dayton, that Wilhelmina, being Ted, Ted Lea, that I said, "How did you do that?" I says, "We work as a local provider." And I said, "That was a key." And so, anyway, he's very excited about coming out and doing that. So, we're, we're going to move forward with him. And he's, he's an Oregonian, he's, he was in the legislature for 10 years. He knows his way around, he's got connections, so. That was a good piece.
He came to me to present it, very well.
So, all in all, it was, it was good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And one other comment.
You're talking about grizzly bears, aren't you?
I, don't get me started, as of then, I'm, excuse me. Jeez, did you see that?
Did you see the grizzly bears?
But then they'll probably want to start a new department to control the grizzlies after they read it.
Once they get...
This is like their wolves. Oh, come on, people.
We don't have to worry about, they're not going to migrate from the northern Washington state.
My comment during that whole conversation, if we don't get off and get NACO working on this at the nation, NACO is, we pay dues, belong to NACO. These are coming out of national legislation. We need them at the table. We need to be of voice. And so, that was...
And another thing was the Chetco Bar fire, you know, we were hoping to get about 13% salvage value out of it. And they came back with a heck of a deal. The US Forest Service says, "We'll give you 2%."
4%.
They gave them a 4 out of 13%, which is not even worth anything.
They weren't...
But I did complete my 5K.
Oh, congratulations.
Out of almost 600 runners, I came across 161st. I was the 71st man to cross the line. I took 10 minutes off my previous 5K. I did it in 42.38 seconds. So, if anybody tells me I'm too old for this position, tell them, "Let's go run a 5K."
No.
Let me tell you something. Todd and I have decided you're a cyborg.
I think so.
There's no way that somebody that's at your age can do what you do and better your time every single year. So, our hat is off to you.
Congratulations.
We can't keep up with you, so.
And I'm not going to try.
I think you're, I think you're definitely, yeah, you're breaking some records every year.
Anyway, so that's my shareings.
All right, real quickly, last night at the American Red Cross, there was a emergency preparation affair, the likes of which I've never seen. 300 people standing alone, laying in Newburg. It's called Prepare Out Loud. And it's the kind of thing and the kind of presentation where if you haven't been prepared, you will get prepared, because it was absolutely and nothing short of spectacular. Emergency manager, Brian Young was there, I was there, Christie Cook is one of the organizers, and it was just phenomenal. So, it was really great to see that. And Safe Families is up in there. There are more and more volunteers. We had appreciation night the other night, and I'll be meeting with Representative Noble over two issues I'm concerned about, and that is a fix for DHS child welfare, which we bring it back to the local level and do a pilot project here in Yankton County. And the other one that he has agreed to look at, and that is a spy in the sky, but legislative fix for our, what I consider unconstitutional takings of equity in people's tax-for-closed property. So, we can't, can't fix it here, maybe the legislature. But my guess is, when it comes to government turning over revenue that's a potential source of revenue, they're not going to be willing to do it. But it's worth a shot.
Well, and if nothing else, we need to partner up with more of these agencies that we can work with them to take our for-closed properties and provide them for housing, low-income housing. So, you know, there's nothing wrong with a little sweat equity to, you know, people who are having significant time affording homes. We have these homes. If we can work through a nonprofit entity such as Community Home Builders to take these properties, work with the homeowners, help them finance the repurchase or purchase, I think there's a win-win here, and we've got to find ways to make that happen. And I don't, I know I mentioned it to Christian, but Teresa at Citizen Bank, who is President of the Community Home Builders, got the go-ahead from her people to, we're going to move ahead. Hopefully, we're going to work on connecting a couple of the properties that currently have, that are lived in by people who can't buy them based on our rules, and work with Community Home Builders, take those over and keep those people in their homes and make it, make it possible. So, yeah, I just, I agree with you. We've got to find ways of utilizing these properties in a better way.
I'd love to see the folks, I'd love to see the fix for the taxes, you know, I think that's, because I agree with Commissioners there wholeheartedly. My big concern is, when you talk to tri-county area, the Baltimore, Washington, Flag of this county, do they have enough, a big enough lobbying area that they're not going to let that go through?
But I think what we do is we make it so that counties, it should be at the discretion of the counties.
Yes, I agree.
So, we're already doing that in Dayton, with the, with the properties in Dayton. We're doing that with the property that we, with the commission over on 14, and with the property that we gave to, that we transferred over to Habitat in Newburg. So, I think we're, it's a precedent, and I think we continue doing it. So, if there's nothing else for the good, we will conclude today's informal session at 2:24.